Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Mr. Ross.
Councilman Alaw is absent, not feeling well. Councilmember Crosby?
Here.
Councilmember Carter is present and absent. Mayor Protem Davis?
Here.
Mayor Beth Brown?
Here.
We have presentations tonight. Our first presentation proclamation proclaiming the month of March 2022 as Red Cross Month, honoring and recognizing every day honorees who help us fulfill our mission and our community across the country, who donate funds, donate blood, and volunteer to make a difference. Erica Fausto Aguado, Red Cross Executive Director of the Greater San Gabriel Valley and Pomona Valleys, actually will be doing virtually because she's doing virtually. How are you? Sila Burn, proclamation, whereas in times of crisis, people come together to care for one another, this humanitarian spirit is part of the foundation of our community and is exemplified by the American Red Cross volunteers and donors. And whereas in 1881, Clara Barton founded the American Red Cross, turning her steadfast dedication for helping others into a bold mission of preventing and alleviating people's suffering. And whereas today, more than 140 years later, we honor the kindness and generosity of Red Cross volunteers who continue to carry out Clara's lifesaving legacy. And whereas they join the millions of people across the United States who volunteer, give blood, donate financially, or learn vital life-preserving skills through the Red Cross. And whereas in the greater San Gabriel and Pomona Valleys, the contributions of local Red Cross volunteers gives hope to the most vulnerable in their darkest hours, providing emergency shelter, food and comfort for families, donating essential blood for accident and burn victims, heart surgery and organ transplant patients, supporting service members and veterans along with their families and caregivers, saving the lives of others with first aid, CPR, and other skills, or delivering international humanitarian aid. And whereas their work to prevent and alleviate human suffering is vital to strengthening our community's resilience, we dedicate this month of March to all those who continue to advance the noble legacy of the American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, who lived by her words, "You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it." Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of Laverne hereby proclaims March 2022 as American Red Cross Month. We encourage all residents of Laverne to reach out and support this humanitarian vision and mission. Thank you. Erica, you have a few words?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. I apologize if I couldn't be there in Port Manteau or wherever. Also, I'm not feeling well, but really appreciate the city's wonderful partnership with us always. We're excited to actually meet with the city this week, be in the city this weekend, do some home fire, attend education to some residents of the city of Laverne. So, thank you for proclaiming March as Red Cross Month, and thanks for having me.
Thank you very much. Our next presentation proclamation to proclaiming the month of March 22 as Irish-American Heritage Month. Recognize the contributions that Irish immigrants and their descendants have made to the U.S. society. Virtually every realm of American endeavor, from steelworking or biotechnology to literature, has been proven through Irish-descended hands and minds. Laverne resident, Mr. Bowen, you can come up. On behalf of the Cultural Renaissance and Social Inclusion Committee, Cassie will be accepting the proclamation. Mr. Bowen?
I would be a previous recipient.
Oh, that's cool.
To show my...
I like it. There you go. Did you take some orange juice?
Cookies, always.
Cookies and orange juice. City of Laverne proclamation, whereas in October 1990, the 101st United States Congress passed Public Law 101-418, which established March 1991 as Irish-American Heritage Month, and the President issues a proclamation commemorating the occasion each year. And whereas the month of March has been recognized as Irish-American Heritage Month in the United States since 1991, and it celebrates the many great contributions Irish immigrants and the descendants have made to our country and its history. And whereas by the year 1776, nearly 300,000 Irish nationals had immigrated to the American colonies, and they played a crucial role in America's War of Independence. They helped to fashion a system of government for the young nation. And whereas generations of Irishmen and women have helped shape the idea of America, overcoming hardship and strife through strength and sacrifice, faith, family. And whereas as we celebrate Irish-American History Month, we recognize the Irish people's contributions to our country. And whereas the Irish are inextricably linked to the growth of the United States in fields ranging from literature, education, science, politics, law enforcement, and militaries. And whereas we owe a debt of gratitude to the Irish-American inventors and entrepreneurs who have helped define our country as the land of opportunity. And whereas we celebrate the sacrifices and contributions that generations of Irish-Americans have made to build a better America, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Laverne hereby proclaims Irish-American History Month this day, the 21st of March 2022.
Yeah, just real quick, thank you very much. My number one, Bowen is Scottish, but my, the Casey's were all Irish and came here in the late, actually the late 1800s, ended up in, actually in Des Moines, Iowa. And Tim, you talked about contributions. When they came here, they weren't working the great jobs. They got the lousy jobs. They weren't really invited, they weren't really accepted very well. They worked as coal miners, they worked as all the jobs, any job they could get, quite frankly. So, it wasn't great. They took all pride and they worked hard. My grandmother moved here in about 1930, worked for the city of San Gabriel for 30-some years as a bookkeeper, and she would be very proud today. So, thank you, City of Laverne, for the proclamation.
Announcements, upcoming announcements, Sherry?
Not this time. She's got marmalade. I am suddenly marmalade.
It's coming in.
Did you tell that I took care of the donation with the shirt? Okay, I paid off.
You made good on your...
I made good on my pledge?
Very good.
Will you give my hand raise?
Just wanted to remind everybody about the monthly Cassie meeting. Our meetings are virtual and take place on the first Wednesday of the month at 5:00 P.M. This April meeting will be a business meeting where we will discuss the strategic plan for the committee. We hope to have your attendance and participation. To get access to the Zoom link, check the city website or ccsassie@socialmedia.com. Thank you.
I just wanted to, for those that didn't know, and I'm sure most of you do, that the LA County Supervisors at last week's meeting basically voted to take Laverne's Applebaum Page off of the list of the SYTF youth facility, and it was... I just wrote a little something here just to, last week we had averted a disaster of epic proportions to our city and residents with the decision of the security facility at Applebaum Page. I want to thank the people that rose up to oppose this. First, to those that contacted me with the information that was very important to our city on this issue, that was very important. We were told by just individuals that, I'll just leave it at that, and it really opened up our eyes to what was actually going on and what we needed to do. Thank you all. Second of all, Pam Berry, Rick Bowen, Kathy Newham, Joe Wetten, Cynthia Gabbaldon, Joe Gabbaldon, Anna Anderson, Lily Brainerd, previous mayor John Blickenstadt, Gil Ivey, Randy Lathan, Michelle McLean, Laura Rado, Robert Kerst, Tracy Gonzalez, Gina Henry, and Joe Donahue. And a special thanks to Nadine O'Cham for being at every single meeting. And I mean every single meeting. And as we know, they were a bit trying, a bit unorganized. We're talking probation department, we're talking commission oversight, we're talking DJJ, we're talking county supervisors, and we're talking a county supervisors meeting will go for four and a half hours. So you have to hang on the phone and pay close attention. And I know our city manager also was on those, and sometimes we got to speak, sometimes we didn't, but it was the fact that they saw us. And for all the, and thanks to all of you for the amazing rallies, the news coverage, the cards sent to the supervisors, John and Ken's show, telling all who would listen to fight this. I want to thank all of the residents that rose up and sent letters to our supervisors in opposition to the SYTF facilities at Applebaum Page. Thanks to our city manager, Bob Rossi, for all the information and letters that were written to our county supervisors, and all the updates and talking points for all of us to be educated and informed while addressing the supervisors. Thanks to our council members who were engaged and chose to write, fight, and be on the supervisor calls. Thanks to Supervisor Barker and her staff for the talking points and information for us to fight this. Thanks to Hilda Solis and her staff for their support and for amendment to remove Applebaum Page as a security facility for pretty much ever. I am truly proud to be only the mayor, not only the mayor of a great city, but as a resident to stand side by side with all of you at the rallies, on the many calls for multiple department meetings over the last three months. This was truly a huge win for us, our children, our children's children. Thanks to you all. Appreciate it. Thank you. We have anybody else for announcements here? Sit. Then we will move it back to my paper. We have a consent calendar. Is there anything, I just meant pull up the consent calendar, Mr. Rossi. Then any questions from council or just a motion?
Still move.
Second?
Second.
I heard you. Vote, please.
Thank for our close to Mr. Brown.
Okay. No, they didn't bring it up, so I will...
Good.
A little more patience.
Motion carries. Item seven, public hearing, Mr. Rossi.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you will have this hearing by Cody Howie, our city engineer.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. This item, as stated by Mr. Rossi, is the public hearing for a vacation, public sewer and water utilities located on 1520 and 1530 White Avenue. Property owner has requested the city vacate these utility easements. Public Works has had an opportunity to review the easements and evaluate facilities within those easements. Based on records offhand, or at hand, only water facilities were located within those easements even though they were including of sewer uses. There is notably a sewer easement on site located elsewhere, and that will be preserved and is excluded from this vacation. It's worth noting that the property owner who owns 1520, 1530 also owns 1510. On the October 27th, 2021, planning commission meeting, they received approval for a project that includes 83,000 square foot of mixed commercial and warehouse space. To conclude my presentation, this vacation will result in eliminating the rights to those utilities. However, those utilities are no longer needed, but the site is going to undergo redevelopment soon enough. Therefore, it's staff recommendation that the city council hold in here the public for the vacation two water and sewer easements located on 1520 and 1530 North White Avenue, and approved resolution 22-14 vacating subject utility easements and authorizing staff to report the quitclaim deed with the office of the counter quarter. That concludes my report. I'm available for questions, and we also have a representative from the owner as well.
Council, have any questions?
Council, any question for Mr. Howie before we go to public comment?
No.
Okay. We'll go ahead. Thank you very much. We may call you back. We're going to open a public comment. Do we have any public comment on this issue here?
No, previous request.
I know it's exciting. Okay. Don't all jump at once. Nothing on the participants?
Yeah.
We'll give it a minute in case somebody wants to...
One person that can vacation joke on that?
Totally. We're vacating your sewer. I'll be not a good one. We'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back over to the desk. Any questions for staff, council?
No.
I guess just for, so that, I guess, I'll just ask it this way. Who's going to take over responsibility for those utilities? Is the city of Pomona or what's going to happen?
So, there are, there are water lines located within the site. The site will be merged to one parcel. It will still remain under private ownership, and since we are vacating the easement, those utilities will be removed in the construction process. So, there is a valve that has been installed, so when they do come to shut down the water, it won't impact service to some of the surrounding sites. And so it should be a fairly seamless process. Basically, they're going to dig it up and remove it, and it will be severed, and future service will come from that water line that remains in White Avenue, but the water line that's on site will cease to exist.
Thank you. Clear as mud.
For the question? Motion, please.
A motion to pass resolution number 2214.
Second.
Vote, please.
I was quick. They were ready for us.
Other matters, item number eight, Mr. Rossi.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I will be taking this item. I do have a PowerPoint presentation that I will be working through. There's no formal action that is going to be required of you tonight. This is simply to give you an update of how we are progressing on direction that council gave us roughly a year ago, and we're getting to the point to take some formal actions or begin some formal actions, and before we did, we wanted to circle that with council. In February of 22, or 2020, council gave preliminary authorization after hearing a report or got information regarding some funding mechanisms regarding some of the projects that were identified in the city's EIFD. Since that time, staff has initiated some of the initial work on design, estimates of cost, as well as working with our consultants on what some of the financing options are that are available to us. Earlier this month, staff presented the similar information to the Public Finance Authority for the EIFD, which is the governing body for the infrastructure district. And again, before we move forward, we were coming back to council to confirm the prior direction given. As council is aware, but for the benefit of the public, the EIFD is an instrument that was established back in 2017 to help fund roughly 14 projects that were identified in the Laverne-specific plan to accommodate the gold line coming in as well as the associated development that was there. Through that, there were some priority projects that were identified that we wanted to get done sooner rather than later. One of those projects was, isn't here but is separately being pursued, is the pedestrian bridge, and you've heard a lot about that, and there will be some stuff coming forward on that. But for tonight's discussion, priority projects we will be referring to aren't those particular projects, but some of the others. So tonight's update will be specific to, you can go to the next slide, the area that was identified for pedestrian movement strictly from the station to Old Town into ULB. This area is identified as needing that work to be done sooner rather than later. Obviously, we want it done in unison with the completion of the gold line when it comes operational, so that as we have those riders, we have that work completed. So, we identified this list of areas that need to be done, and the work that has been identified is roughly $2.2 million worth of work that needs to be done here. In addition to this, we have identified another 1.3, and that will be on the next slide, of work that we feel needs to be completed also in advance on Arrow Highway. And these will be some of the more aesthetic improvements to improve the, not so much the movements there, but the area on the medians, as well as some of the, associated the area around the gold line station and the potential development that's going to occur in that area. So, we are looking for roughly $3.5 million at this point that we need to finance to start this work. So, what we had discussed with council previously is the city issuing of a bond with the understanding that the finance authority through the EIFD would eventually pay the city back over time. The thing that is challenging about tax increment financing, which is what the EIFD is, is they do not have the money in the early years because it's all based on the prospective development or when the development occurs and the increasing value of the revenues that they receive. So, early on, they do not have the revenue to support this work, but they will later on. So, what has been proposed is that the city would issue the bond, the city would then turn around and loan the money directly or to the EIFD and the PFA, and then at a later date, the city would be reimbursed back when they have the proceeds of the revenues to be able to do that. I'll show you a chart that anticipates when that would be able to occur. There is already an action that the council took last July that allows that spread, it's called a cooperation agreement. It's been approved by the PFA as well as the city, that will enable that reimbursement to happen at a future date. So what the city would do, you can go to the next slide, the legal structure of what we would be asking or taking, moving forward with is a lease revenue bond. And essentially, what happens is the city puts up one of its properties as the collateral, if you will, to secure against that lease. The city would make that available through its public finance authority because that's the mechanism with which we go out and attract investors and bondholders. So, the city's public finance authority, which is this body here, would basically put this piece of property out there, they would then get bondholders to issue them the $3.5 million. It would get us a favorable rate, and then we would turn around, use those proceeds to then, to give to the EIFD to then take on the work that we are, have identified that needs to be done. The city, in the meantime, would be paying the debt service on this out of its proxy allocation, and we get an annual allocation for mass transit dollars. All the work that we are doing here is eligible to be paid with those dollars. So, we will be using those funds, just a portion of them. We still have other dollars to use for the other activities that we have, and then eventually we will get reimbursed back over time. So that's kind of the legal structure that exists for it. Now, the next slide kind of puts that in an illustration, the, so the flow of funds you can see will move from the public finance authority, or from the bondholders to the public finance authority, back through the city to the EIFD, and then the payments will circulate through on that, just kind of going over what I had put to you previously. The other part is the city's consideration of properties that would need to be put up. We have identified four that we would pursue. Now, it's not necessarily necessary for council to give us direction on these, however, if you had guidance on what would be your preferred, this was kind of staff's list of what we felt would be the easiest and cleanest to use in this regard. It has been identified that Lots Forest Park probably would be used just because of some complications there with that particular structure because it's a park with the aquatic center. So, we may be removing that from consideration altogether. But the other three generally seem appropriate, but council wanted to provide a priority. We can certainly take that in guidance because we will have to go out and get a title search on these, and then it could be one, it could be multiple that need to be put to secure that loan, we just don't know. Next slide. So, hard to read on there, I apologize, but...
I can read fine. I see a percent sign.
Yes, so the important part is, this is just showing the schedule over the 30 years of what it would be for that issuance. And generally, the debt service would be between $205,000 and $206,000 a year for the $3.5 million bond that we would be issuing. We would, there's obviously a cost of emissions that gets pulled into that, so our total cost would be about $3.7. That would be the requirement to pay over that time. At any point in the future, should the city, when the PFA gets to a certain point that if we wanted to call that and have the PFA issue their own, we could certainly explore that option, but essentially, the city would be responsible for making these payments until the bond is completely paid off. So, moving on to the next slide, how is the PFA going to be able to support paying that back? This is a projection of what their revenue generation is expected to be. I will just kind of walk you through. So, the assessed value in the kind of second column there is what is currently the base that the EIFD is generating its revenue off of. So, as you can see, as we move over to the blue column, that's how much money is being generated on an annual basis. The middle column of added development, that's where we anticipate seeing a lot of the, several of the projects that either Fairflex or some of the other developers that have expressed interest will start to come online. So that's when we'll start to see a lot of that property value grow, and as a result, that revenue will then accelerate. So you can see by probably about year '24, '25, '26, the EIFD should be in a position to start making some type of payment back to the city. There will be other debt that they do need to issue, so we'll have to balance that out, but at least at that point, there would be an opportunity to start expecting some reimbursement back to the city for the debt service that they are paying here. So the process that, assuming that council still sees the support for this that we are looking to take on, is here we are on the 21st. We would start to work on putting together the documents. We would come back to the council May 16th for authorization, and we would go out and sell the bonds by the end of May to have an issuance by the middle of January. With all that, when you look to the left, what we would hope to be able to do is issue an RFP, go out to bid by the latter part of June. We should have our documents, our design work done by then. Eric, would you believe so? Cody? It seemed like good timing. So that we can then begin construction hopefully by September after we get the bid back in there. So I will stop there and see if there are any questions council had, and then we can move on.
Counsel?
My, I'm just loud enough. What are...
The audience can hear you around me.
I can't hear you. I can never do this thing. Okay. There's one over here. There you go. This is Margaret, yeah, watching. Hi, Tim. Okay. There you go. Hi, Tim. I just, I want to know, the ramifications if EIFD would not, we seem not be reimbursed. You know, issuing this bond and we're taking the loan out on the city, but what if, if something happened that they can't reimburse us with, with the monies going on?
Well, the monies that you're using are intended for mass transit projects in the first place. So the, the money the city would be out would be Proposition C dollars, not general fund dollars, that are being used for their intended purpose in the first place. So in the worst case, if, if for some reason that would occur, and I can't see a circumstance that it would because the EIFD would in fact have to go to default, and then that money, the property tax that was going to be going there would be returning to the city coffers anyway. So we've just identified, the EIFD has just identified an area where that incremental tax revenue is being used for the purpose of doing these projects. So I, I don't see that there would be any way that the, the city wouldn't lose those funds. It would just be a matter of how they would come back to the city.
And what's the risk of the, putting the property up as collateral?
Well, the bond will, it helps to give us a favorable rate because they like to see that the city has something in it that they can attach to a physical piece of property. But it would only be a jeopardy if the city were to default on its payment of the bonds, which I don't see happening.
So the part that Rick was talking about, what, so you're saying that we're not sure if it's going to be one parcel or more parcels that would need to be used as the, as the collateral for the bond issuance? Is there a sense of a percentage of total value that we're, we're looking at? Or are we thinking that, that even one of the city yards may not be worth three and a half or 3.7 million dollars?
I'm not overly concerned about it reaching that value. It's the, the percentage over that it does need to be valued at. I would expect that only one of those would be needed, but I didn't want to tell you one and then have it end up at two was necessary to get a favorable interest.
So we don't, we don't have a sense yet to say that if we're only, if our leverage or loan to value is 20%, it's going to be really attractive or if it's 50% or 80%. So we don't have those kinds of numbers yet. This is still really early.
Exactly. So I, and when we come back to you, you will have that information before you have to approve the document. I just wanted you to understand in case you said, no, I don't want that one listed. I didn't want any surprises when we came back with final authorization.
Yeah.
Okay. So basically, I'm, I'm really excited about this because of the fact this is the first step of many steps in the future for us to keep building on our EIFD, which is, we're one of the only cities with the county of Los Angeles that, one of the few cities, I should say, that started this. We were actually one of the first cities to start this with EIFD. And then the gold line came along and hopefully it goes to Claremont and Montclair. But my, it's not even a concern. I just want to make sure that we picked the right piece of property that's the least amount of work and effort, that's the cleanest piece of property that we can do this with. As far as the payback, options like C funds are great. I think that's going to be able to cover that. I do appreciate Mr. Crosby looking out as far as the financial part of it, but I think it's all up from here. We're going to continually hope this, our Fairplex, our hotels and our construction and our hopefully good housing and I'm, I think this is a great deal. It's just that all you want from us really is, is a recommendation, but we're going to, I'm going to open this up for the public hearing.
Yeah. It's just to confirm what we brought to you a year ago. We've gotten a little bit more details. We've got better dollars on what it's going to cost. So I just wanted to check back in before we proceeded with the bond issuance.
If there are other questions for staff, I'd like to open them for public hearing. Go ahead, open up the public hearing. Any questions or comments for staff? Ms. Bocham?
All right, Denise Bocham, 2516 Amherst. I actually have more of a question than a, than a comment for Mr. Russi. You said a portion of the money is coming from the proxy allocation, which is an annual fund. Why wouldn't more money be taken, because you said it was only a portion of it? Why wouldn't a larger amount be taken from that rather than have the larger portion be financed?
The, rather than shorten the timeframe, we do have other projects because we use proxy for construction projects as well. And so the, at the $3.5 million, at the rate that we are looking to take, to collect, that's what the price is, or it's $200,000. So we have other dollars, but we have other needs for those dollars as well.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Gallo?
Steve.
I didn't find him speaking. I just wanted to put a card in there. So just have two questions, I think. From the presentation, what is the likelihood that the projects that were listed in the chart that would initiate the, the return of investment would not proceed on that schedule? And what would that do to the financial obligation? And then the second part is in the uncertain climate they were in with interest rates. The Fed announced that there's probably expected, or six, who knows when. What does that impact have on this obligation? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo.
So what I've come to learn is no project's done until it's done. So there, those projects that we have listed and those out years are based on the interest that has been brought to us over the last year, year and a half. That doesn't mean they will happen, but to our best guess, that's what they show. What does that mean? That would only mean that if it, the project slide, so does the revenue. That just means that the payment will be made later, in later years. The obligation doesn't go away. It just may not happen until year seven or eight. When we originally talked about this, we didn't anticipate a payment starting until year 10 anyways. So this could have the payments happening sooner than what we originally talked about. As for the other question of the interest rate, that just means that it could be higher cost of debt service per year. So based on what we've seen there, I think it was three and a quarter. So if it rose to three and a half, then you, you would expect that 205, 206 to maybe go to 215, depending on what the rate is. So this is what we know today. Obviously, we'll bring back to you, in either case, that would be put on the proxy allocation that we have. And we received, I want to say, in excess of about $500,000. So we'd still be able to absorb that as well as take on some of the other projects that we use those money for.
And the interest rate is fixed at the time of issuance?
Yes, sorry. So that will not fluctuate. Once we do the issuance, it's a fixed rate. Thank you.
Anyone have to speak? Mr. Johnson?
We're, we're planning on encumbering properties that we own outright and we have for years and they were purchased years ago. Question is, if you're doing this, why not go to the voters? Why not put it on a ballot and let the voters decide? It's encumbering, encumbering quite a few properties that residents, at least, have paid for in tax.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Anyone else? Anybody in line?
No previous requests, no man raised, sir.
Then we'll close public comment and bring it back up to the dais. Council?
I have no further questions. Just that by doing this is going to help us move forward and move forward with the whole program of our downtown area and really support that.
Yeah, to build off of what Councilmember Crosby was saying, I mean, if you remember the chart, the basis, right, tax basis for that area right now is in the, is a little under $60,000 or maybe it moved up into the less than $100,000 level. But the whole sense of, of the enhanced infrastructure financing district is to accelerate the property tax growth, which you saw that by the time we're 10 years into it, the property tax pretty much grows by about, well, grows up to more than $2.5 million, so more than 25 times. So we're essentially investing. Yes, we're leveraging assets that we have by collateralizing them to get the money. We've got a backstop of Schedule C funds until these projects have raised the property taxes so that the property tax incremental piece can pay off the note itself. But this isn't, this is a reasonable approach to accelerate the process rather than having it take 20 to 30 years. It can happen in five to 10 years so that we get that area around the gold line developed the way we want it to develop, being used and useful and providing the revenues that we want. So it's a good maneuver. And, and the residents have their opportunity and continue to have their opportunity to weigh in on each of these decisions as we go along. We don't need to bring everything to a measure before our residents.
Thank you, council. So basically, those, those charts as far as the dollars on your last chart, those are conservative numbers, are they not? As we generally approach our numbers, it's usually conservative on approach.
Are you talking about the development numbers or something?
Development numbers, yeah.
Yeah. I would say the added development, of course, is a estimation of that interest. So that, other than that, the, the assessed values, those are conservative numbers as well as those revenues. The, the middle added development number, that could shift. Until the projects are completed, we will not be able to confidently say, but this is what we believe will be occurring in the next several years.
And we've done the bond issuance, it's been done multiple times. It's a, for properties and...
I don't know. I'm trying to remember the last time we've done a lease revenue bond. I can't, not, not in my time. We don't, this is the first time we've done one of that nature.
I think with the amount on this one, although we are encumbering a piece of property, and I do agree with Mr. Johnson that, yes, we're encumbering, but I think for $3.5 million, it's, it's a small amount that we can pay with proxy funds that, really, we need to kickstart this. So, you know, fortunately, the idea is where we are right now is we need to move because that gold line's coming fast and faster than anticipated. And I think that we do need to be ready. And there are already builders that are coming in with property and with plans that Mr. Shear will attest to, so. And not only that, it has to do with the bridge and some other things and it's going to be able to complete those, which we had some great news this week, but that's, we'll talk about that.
You can share it if you'd like.
Yeah. We, Grace Napolitano, we had the money, $4 million set aside. Grace Napolitano had put aside for our pedestrian bridge and it went through all the houses and the president signed it when, Tuesday?
Last Tuesday.
Last Tuesday. So that's $4 million up. So, and then we're looking at some other issues with the utilities that are underneath there. Yeah, we'll never talk about that. Anyway, it looks like we're getting much closer to funding that pedestrian bridge, which is absolutely necessary to complete that between the Fairplex and the, and Laverne and the station. So, so I think, you know, I think this being $3.5 million, I think this is a, it's sound. I think it's going to, it'll fly. I think the bond issuance will go well. Yes, we're encumbering, but I think in this instance, it's a small amount. It's not large. You know, when we had our pension obligation bond, there was a lot of discussion over that and this is a small amount. I think it's a benefit for our city and I think it's, it's going to go in the right direction. So with that, motion, or just, just direction?
If there is any direction on prioritizing those properties, otherwise, we will move forward with the comments that I've received. No action needed.
Can they just make sure that we inform everyone what we're doing? We'll do that in meetings and make sure everybody knows and is on the same page. Our residents are informed and we know what's going on.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We move to item nine, public comments or communications. Anybody wish to speak? Public comments first?
Yeah, no.
No cards?
Oh, I, I forgot to do that.
Wait, I think Ms. Bocham had her hand up first.
Oh, no, no, no.
Oh, wait, no, wait.
Ladies first.
They took it out.
I love the man.
I just wanted to take a moment to thank the city's staff, especially JR and Lupe. There was a problem with the city's website going to the city council agendas and she worked diligently and got it taken care of because I told her that, you know, many people that attend don't necessarily check the agenda until the date of the meeting. And because it was down, I was concerned. She emailed to me, but I was concerned about other people might not have access to that. And so she went above and beyond and I know that's JR's area and so I personally want to thank you for that. To me, that's one of the most important things is to know what this council's going to discuss and make it available to the public. So I, I really want to thank you for that. Secondly, I want to request that whenever there's a presentation at the city council meeting, such as the one that Mr. Russi just presented, that those PowerPoint presentations or slides are also like put on the website so that people can print that or download that, so that information is also available to the public. I think I had requested the presentation that Chief Nig did a couple of weeks back and I still haven't seen that posted on the city's website or YouTube video if that link is attached to it. But, but I think that's important information because, I don't know if you see me back here, but I'm taking pictures on the screen and, you know, it's like this small, you thought that was small, see it on my phone. So, yeah. I have to load it to my computer and then do a magnification, but, but that's, that's important data that, that should be made public to the, you know.
You just wrote it down to make sure. I know that we're, we're how far away from our website? Are you? Jared?
The plan is to go live April 28th.
Okay. All right. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Gallo?
So in the spirit of all the proclamations and acknowledgement, I'm a huge supporter of youth athletics and we have been very blessed to have great sports teams in our city. And I haven't heard anybody standing about it, but Damian won state a little less, a little over a week ago. Yeah. And vision one, that's a big deal and I just, I think they deserve some acknowledgement. You don't get state champs in your city very often and they are part of the local community. So just throw it out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Anyone else? Mr. Bowen and then Hannah.
One quick comment and a question. Mr. Hepburn, you gave a lot of people credit for the affomon page stoppage of what was going on. I hope everybody in the city knows that would not have happened without you. You are the one that brought it to everybody's attention. You are the one that commented. You are the one that told people. You are the one that were the face of this thing. And I hope to God everybody in this city understands how important the mayor's role was in making sure we don't have a prison in the city of Laverne. Thank you and thank you a hundred times. My, my question is this. I live in northern Laverne and by the golf course and it's a wreck. And I'm wondering, does the city have any control over that? I know that, that most property has been cleaned up, but there's, I mean, huge dozens appears of, of oak trees, pine trees that are knocked over and just laying there. M1 is got to be, got to be a fire hazard. But does the city have any control over that or can it just lay there forever and die? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Any comments? Hannah? Or I should say, Ms. Anderson?
Hannah Anderson. I was wondering, is, are you guys going to send out something to people before they vote so they know what district they're in? Because your maps don't actually, do they have them on the, do you guys have them on the internet? But it doesn't have an actual screen of who's who that does that on the website?
Oh, answer, go ahead.
Okay. Because I think some, some of these people don't even know that they're, we're having district voting in my neighborhood. And the person across the street from me is in a district, different district than I am. And, you know, we're talking and they...
You're, you're in District 3, right? And I cross the street to 4.
And across the street is 4. And it's like, everybody's confused up there. So at least send it to my HOA so that everybody knows and just because everybody's asking everybody. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do we have any answers? Don't all jump up? No? We're going to close public comment up to the dais? Thank you.
You want to go?
Yes, please.
Got a list here, so I will go through. As far as the fire presentation, I'll find out why that is not up and make sure that it gets taken care of. As far as presentations the day of, we are working on those the day of. So, but we will make it a point, including this one, to make sure that they get those. we will make it a point, including this one, to make sure that they get posted. Thank you for pointing that out. As far as Damian, we've already made contact with them and are trying to coordinate a date. Thanks for pointing that out, I appreciate it. Golf course, Eric, they said it was roughly $100,000 and something thousand. They actually reached out to us last week, seeing if there was any type of assistance to help with the removal of the trees that were down. We don't have anything available to us, we, obviously, will expect that if there are fire hazards, and that will be inspected as such, they will be required, required to remove those at, as per code. Beyond that, it'll be a matter of, I guess, time. I'm not sure of the specifics, but we'll make sure that our fire marshal is made aware to go do an inspection. And then as far as the district map, there was a notice that was sent to all voters around January, the county sent it, there was a postcard letting everybody know that we had gone to district voting, and which districts were up. We do have an interactive map, though, that is on our website, that people can go to, there it is, and actually get down to their specific street so that they know what district they are in. So that information is available.
Can JR pull up Hannah Anderson? She's on, just pick up Golden Hills Road, District Four, because I'm going to see it myself. Yeah. Go up to District Four, and you'll pick Golden Hills Road.
Yeah.
Okay. And then you have the gate on Sloan Drive, which is Cactus and Cactus, the country club, and that's District, I think that back side is District Four. Is that correct? That area right there?
Yeah, so...
Oh, so with Sloan Drive, it's actually on the other side also?
Yeah.
Wow.
So, this is active on our website, if you go to the district voting link, you will be able to get to the interactive map, and people can drill down to what district they're actually in.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask that we just put that right up at the top of the list, just say, district voting?
It is.
But I went there the other night, and I'm looking through that whole thing.
It's on the front.
I have trouble with it. I don't like our website, sorry.
April 12 through April 20.
It's actually embedded into the language, it's not necessarily...
Can we put it, just a link right behind, right above online class registration, just put a link and say, here's your district? I think that's important, that residents just click on it, because this is, we're getting close to election time, and people are going to start getting stuff, we should, you know, make it so people can see what we put.
And then the, I was reminded that the sample ballots, as well as the mail-in ballots, will be going out in the next month or so from the council.
And then those will definitely just have the names of the district.
Yes. Thought it'd be nice to have that interactive map, where you just click it and go on to it and see. At the end of this, that was it?
That's it. Mr. Crosby?
Yes, thank you. Before I make my comments, Councilmember Lau sends her regards and apologizes for not being here today. I do have a few of her comments, so I'll read them as well. So, she wanted to make a shout out to Laverne Little League opening day, was a beautiful day. It was great to see so many smiling kids and families out and about. And a shout out to Jacob Leneberg for rocking the national anthem on his guitar. Incredibly cool to see such stage presence of a young musician. If you were there, it was pretty awesome. He was just rocking his electric guitar up there. I want to wish everyone happy Irish Heritage Month on top of Women's History Month. Irish Heritage Month was first identified by presidential proclamation by George W. Bush in 1991, and commemorates Irish Americans and their contributions to our country. It's an opportunity to reflect on how these people made a brave journey to America to escape the Great Famine, to forge a better life for themselves and their families. Thank you to Rick Bowen for bringing this to the attention of the city, as this is just another example of getting to know our fellow residents and their stories. Thank you also to Yvonne Gallegos of Cassie for kindly offering and preparing the wording for the proclamation. Any other residents would like to share their cultures and stories, please consider attending a Cassie meeting. The reopening of Station Three and ceremonial dedication of the new Type III fire engine will be held this Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. There'll be an opening house from 11:00 a.m. to noon, and light refreshments will be served. Kudos to Chief Nick for identifying and creating a sustainable plan for the reopening of the station, and thank yous go to the firefighters, Fire Association, for their partnership in making this happen. And last but not least, happy No-Rus to all who celebrate. No-Rus is Persian New Year and was celebrated yesterday. And as always, be safe and kind, happy spring, from Councilmember Lau. I have a couple also, I want to thank you, Mayor, for, for acknowledging and all the work you've done as well, so the Applewell Page. I also want to thank especially Dinita Boacham. You are amazing out there, pushing me too, so we appreciate that as well. And thank you for always being there. And thanks to all of our residents. But I also want to make sure that recognizing Supervisor Solis and Barker for their support of all Laverne residents and making this Laverne safe. I want to thank Congresswoman Napolitano for helping secure $4 million for the pedestrian bridge for Laverne and add the Laverne stop to the Fairplex crossing over Arrow Highway. And lastly, today we, for this next week, we put out a street closure for Majestic Cycling and Laverne Bicycling. Alfie Sanchez is head of Majestic Cycling, and he's been part of our YFAT committee and helped donate 40 bicycles this last Christmas to maybe eight to 10-year-olds, and they did a great event, and this, the, the Laverne Bike Race really helps that out and promotes that back to the kids. So, just want to thank Mr. Sanchez and Majestic Cycling, and if you want to go see a great race, that's coming up this week.
Thank you, Counselwoman Crosby. Mayor Potem Davis.
My goodness, there is a lot to celebrate. And, and council meetings happen slower timeframe than news information comes, so, so it doesn't surprise me that news is, no wonder news by the time we present it. Because I also wanted to congratulate Damian High School on their victory up in Sacramento, it was a great game to watch. Everybody I knew was asking me why I was watching Spectrum TV's Channel 1. I said, because there's basketball on, and we got a team in there. So that was a great victory. Corona followed up the next night with another victory as well, but that's in San Bernardino, you know, campus, so we'll just keep that minimal. The Little League opening was fantastic. If anybody is familiar with Oakland and the Athletics and how they do things that aren't quite in the norm and the genre of everything else, go watch Moneyball. It, it's, it's, you know, half hour or so into it, they have the, the opening day ceremony where there is a electric guitar just rocking out the Star Spangled Banner. But for those people who were there Saturday at the Little League Park, got to experience that same event in person, it was awesome. He, he really rocked the, the national anthem, it was great. Likewise, I want to thank Supervisor Solis and, and Barker, I want to thank our residents. And, and I too want to lift up Dinita Boacham. When it came to White Avenue, Lily Bernard, and, and, and a few others who are really helping residents stand up and make their voices heard, and I think Dinita really led the way in helping to make residents. I mean, I was talking to people too and reminding them to email or write or talk, call if they had time, but Dinita really did a, did an outstanding job, as did our mayor. I want to thank Nancy Napolitano, or Grace Napolitano, sorry, for the $4 million she contributed through the earmarks for the, over the bridge. And this Saturday, please come to the open house at the fire station. It's going to be a fabulous event. We're going to get to see the devices that they have up there, the crew that's going to be stationed there. It is a good sign of how this last two and a half, maybe three-year conversation about what we wanted to do with city services, specifically around the fire department, really led to a positive outcome, and I think we're all going to enjoy that positive outcome for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Potem Davis. Again, I can't thank our residents enough for, this was a, we dodged a big one this time with the Applewell Page, and I just, it was a village that did it, and I really thank everyone. And Dinita, I called you Snoop Doggy Dog, man, I'll tell you what, you earned that name.
My parents saw that video and asked me about this.
You earned that name, because I, again, I just echo the fact that it took, it took a village, but people rose up and thanked you all. We, we could not have done this without our support, without our city's support, without Hilda Solis's motion, without Catherine Barker feeding us information, it wouldn't have happened, you know, and, and the outcome could have been different, and it wouldn't have been good for us, so. And I also want to thank Grace Napolitano for her wonderful bridge and her support for our, for our pedestrian bridge, because without that, we, we would look for some funds somewhere we may not be able to get. But I also want to say, the, the opening day at Little League was, was incredible, but I love, it was just incredible to see the youth sports out there again, just having a great time, hundreds and hundreds of children and families together again, in the open. No masks, just enjoying the time, just enjoying the weather, and the weather was unbelievable that day.
Yes.
But I also want to thank Bob Rusty, our CD manager, and also our Public Works Director, Sean Igoe, for actually getting that field together, because it was up to minutes before the games that we had a lot of trees fell and they destroyed the backstop and fencing and things like that. And they got it together and got it fixed up, and it was ready for opening day, so kudos to our Public Works. We've got an unbelievable Public Works Department that, and Sean's been doing just a bang-up job. And, so thank you to the staff, you guys did a great job to make that ready. Yeah, please pass that on. Honestly, I just, all everyone said, as far as what's coming up, the, the fire station, this last weekend, on Saturday, we had the, the Benita Auto Shop, it was a car show, and it was in, to raise money, also, there's a historical society, society was there for the, the truck, the citrus truck that's being done by the auto shop to renovate it, so as funds raised for that. They did a bang-up job there, the culinary, Benita Culinary School there had the foods, they had pork sandwiches and all sorts of stuff, they did a fantastic job. The cars were gorgeous. Sherry, how many cars would you say?
Oh my God, well, I was behind the table the whole time with the story, so I don't know. I think that many.
Yeah, 70, 80 cars.
And a lot of interest by the students, that was wonderful.
Our previous mayor, John Lickenstaff, was there too with this, with this panel, man, that's beautiful. But anyway, and I, I do want to mention that the Sea of Laverne, I will agree too, that is a mess. It is a mess. And my comment is, if you can take care of a clubhouse, you can take care of the exteriors. You know, they have, they have things there all the time, it's a delicate situation, obviously, because of who owns it and stuff, but the point is, is that you have to keep it safe for everybody that lives around there, but you also have to keep it upkeep, and you've got homes all the way along there, especially the fencing on Golden Hills, that's an absolute joke, I'll just say. And if you can keep a clubhouse up and you can take care of the grounds, and you can take care of the buildings, and you can have weddings, you can sure as heck take care of the other areas. And that's one little piece, that's just one little piece. Everything else is pretty much closed, except for some of the stuff off of Country Club where the access for these, the cars used to go across, but we'll work on that, you know. But anyway, it has noticed, we've been a little busy with Applewell Page, but we'll start focusing back on the other things that are important to all of us too. Again, residents, you did an unbelievable job. I think this is one time where we really all got together as a group, and I really appreciate it. We have a closed session, is that correct, Mr. Rusty?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Will we be reporting back out to that, or recess, which is, we'll be, we'll be... Council will be, City Council will be meeting in a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.9, subsection A, to discuss a matter regarding Michael Hunt, and there's a case number listed. There's nothing to report.
Very good. We'll recess in closed session. Our next adjournment to Monday, April 4th, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. Presentation to the Benita High School Water Polo Team. So, Mr. Gallo, we are starting to do it now, which is wonderful. So, with that, and our next regular meeting at Laverne City Council scheduled for Monday, April 4th, at 6:30 p.m. The call meeting adjourned at 7:35 p.m. Thank you all.
Mr. Rusty. Sherry.
I forgot to bring...